Okay, it is 5:15 on November 1st, 2022. I will call the meeting to order. January roll call.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Here.
Beal Lindberg.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Lindberg.
Here.
Rudolph.
Here.
We've all been given the agenda. We got a little bit of modification yesterday. You probably saw that. Don't think there's anything else today. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Peterson.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beal Lindberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
And state any conflicts along the way, if you have any. Under the two consent agenda, minutes of 10:18, 2022, council meeting. Claims list, 1277, the amount of $150,425,011. There were a few of those large ones. It's always nice you guys give us the...
Heads up.
Yep, an idea of what's out there. C is HMU Sewer Landfill Reconciliation Report for September of '22. Renewal application for Purple Door Class C liquor license. Someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Lindberg.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beal Lindberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
And we're going to count on Amanda to really stretch this out a little bit. Otherwise, we'd be done here in minutes. So, present to be, give us the quarterly library review. Amanda Brewer. It's all yours.
If you ever attend a library meeting, you know, I'm not good at stretching things out, so...
That's all right.
Do the point. So, just greetings and apologies for not making the last meeting. Bill, you know, it's, your kid gets it, then you get it, so it's rough. So, I'm going to start out with some return on investment numbers for you guys. Gene's going to help me out with his PowerPoint presentation skills. Library materials in that July, we're looking at the July to September quarter. We checked out 13,311. So, over the previous quarter, that previous quarter, it was 12,543. So, almost 1,000 more circulations. But again, summer, summer's our big month, so July, August are some heavy usage. Really excited because we had, that is not 1,100 patrons, it is, I'm sorry. It is 111 new patrons started using library services, which is up over 88 from the previous quarter. It was National Library Card Sign Up Month in September, so that has a lot to do with it. We promoted a lot. And then activities, we had a little over 1,100 people attending our activities. It's down over the previous quarter, which was about 1,700, because August is a month where we have our book sale. And it's our, kind of our transition month from summer chaos to the back to that normal schedule. So, book sale was very, very great this year. We put a lot of work into it. We did about double in donations, funds received, so about $2,800. We usually make about $1,400, $1,500, so we were very happy with that number in August. We had 3,800 digital materials were borrowed, and that's about, it's about $800, or 800 checkouts more than the previous quarter. And we just continue to see that, that rise. And as we go forward in budgeting, we're shifting some dollars around to, you know, to take those dollars where they're not being used in some of our, I guess, in library materials over to the digital as the need arises. It's all about staying on top of what your community is wanting. And then we are, I refer to purchases, we added 502 items to our collection, which is over the previous 448. You can tell 448 is a little low, but it's also at the end of our fiscal year. We try to, we end, we try to end with, you know, within budget or really close to it. So, and then we had over 2,000 visits to our library website in the last quarter. And previously, it was 1,600 in the previous quarter. So, again, lots of the usage out there on our website. Technology is on our next slide. Hotspots, we had 40 times that they were borrowed, which is over the previous quarter of 32. Again, summer is really, really busy. Computer sessions was really out, I mean, it was over, you can see there, over 1,200, and it was 900 the previous quarter. August was really high in, in computer usage. We had a lot of kids. There's just nothing going on in August, it seems like, for not just our library in regards to like transitioning of programs. It's just every, you know, camps are done with. So, we have found a lot of kids who are navigating to the library for a nice, safe, cool place, and we were happy about that. But that's reflected on our computer sessions. And then we had about 8,500 uses on our Wi-Fi. So, that, that maintains a pretty steady usage on our Wi-Fi. The next slide, I'm just going to go over some of our library outreach. Our kids outreach in regards to the story time, it, it kind of shuts down. So, really, all you're looking at is September for youth outreach, and we had 39 participants. But our homebound deliveries, we delivered 157 items last quarter. So, that is just a continuing, that's just a growing program. And then our adults, this is where we go out to like the senior center and Hanson House at Elm Chris. We had 70 people attending. And actually, Hanson House wasn't, they just started back up, so we'll see that number go up as long as, I guess, the flu season isn't too bad this year, because a lot of times they close them down. Onto our creative writing camp, just got some, just some good photos here. We had, we offer this every year, it ranges on the number of participants. It's for like that tween teen group. And so, we had four people who participated. It's a two-day camp, and they do a lot of different writing exercises. One of them was they, they went out and rode outside on the lawn at the courthouse, you know, to get different inspirations of things that they're writing and seeing. So, just another really great camp. Next year, we want to add an additional camp. We've been talking about like a cooking camp. It's hard because we don't have, like, Elkhorn, they have a kitchen, you know, facility, but we don't. So, we hope I have to be creative next year. We want to change that up. The next point is just a little bit on our summer wrap-up. June kicks off our summer, and then July, we tie it all up. So, we had 21 programs that we offered to kids just in July alone. So, we stay very busy in the summertime. And Story Walk, again, it's very busy in the summer. One of the things that we've, we've done is we, we updated the welcome sign, and we put a QR code on there. We're trying to get people to let us know what they think of the Story Walk, but then also to collect data of how many people are out there. So, we put a QR code, we originally just printed on that cover page, but now we're starting to put it every so many, so many pages so that, just to remind people that, as they're going along, to give us that feedback. Because we want to capture that. We have a lot of feedback that we get via emails or just word of mouth, how much people enjoy the, the Story Walk. But it would be, it would be nice to be able to capture that data and bring it back to the state when they request that, so, yes.
Question for Amanda. On that stuff and going back to the previous slides too as well, how do you, how are you promoting that or putting that? Do you have like a newsletter that goes out to people or, I mean, Facebook or advertised?
All of our programming is on our website.
Okay.
And it is also on Facebook. We do the community calendar on KNOD, and then the newspaper does our calendar through there.
Okay.
And occasionally, depending on what it is, if some things, we will do a paid employment, a paid ad, depending on the audience we're trying to target, either a paid ad through Facebook or a paid ad through the newspaper on KNOD.
Okay.
On Twitter.
And, yeah, we tweet, we snap, we Facebook, we Insta.
I love Twitter, I apologize.
I mean, you name it, we are trying, we try to stay up on it.
Okay.
Not me personally, but...
I'm not a tweeter, I guess, or Twitter, so...
The nice part about the library is we try to hire like really diverse people. So, even though, like, we have, we have one person who, she does Insta because like she is like the Insta person. And we have somebody who tweets because she's the tweeter. So, it works out really nice to have those kind of bonus skills, if you want to call them that.
Is your library, is it branched off the city page or is it a standalone website?
It has a standalone website, but there is a link on the city page.
What is your guys' website?
It's harlanlibrary.org.
Hey, good. Give you a little PR there too, and then I apologize, I was not...
Well, that's fine. We also use HMU. They're great about putting up our calendar every month as well, and they, they put up nice graphics for us. So, anywhere we can get free advertising, we do.
By all means, yeah, I'd say get the word out and watch the programs build for you, so...
And when we, a lot of times, we also use the school system to send out mass emails to parents. So, good questions, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, when we went back to school, we partnered up with Teammates, which you guys probably know is a nonprofit here in Shelby County. And they always have a kickoff event that kind of brings mentors and mentees together. And so, we volunteered the library and we put together a program for them. And so, we had pretty good attendance this year. It's such a hard time because a lot of mentors work, but yet it needs to be during certain hours, so... But we had a good, good amount. We had a lot of different, it was kind of like stations that they could go. It was a scavenger hunt, so they could learn about the library at the same time and work with their mentee. That was fun. Early literacy, when we head back to school, we also kick off our story time. And so, just end of August, beginning of September, we're just shy of 80 kids who attended our story times. And early literacy is, is really important. There's lots of information out there as to the importance of it and, and why it's important. And we do lots of programs for kids to try to get their parents to read them, read to them before they go to kindergarten. This is just an example of that. Connecting with families, it's, it's been really fun to have the after-school program back this year. They do that on Monday nights. So, Monday nights is after-school program, Tuesday nights is our volunteer bookworms. And then we have Thursday nights where we have, you know, like Legos or Family Fun Night. So, it seems like there's, there's something regularly bringing kids in. And after-school program, we use it, 3:30 to 4:30, the kids come in and they have some type of planned activity, but they also have stations too, that the kids can do some like independent, independent related activities. So, again, just a lot of reading things that are happening at the, how that they're, we're back in school. And then our next one is, I guess, what I'll call adulting. A lot of people don't realize that the library has a lot of really great free programs. And that's what the library is about. It's, it's about bridging that gap between the people who aren't able to economically afford, whether it's literature, social programming, educational materials. And so, a lot of fun things. So, we had 20 programs during the last quarter. We did an upcycled birdcage. That was fun. They literally folded a book into a birdcage and did some paper art on it. Then we had a beekeeping program, the macrame plant hanger program, that was, that was interesting. And had really great attendance for our Veliska Axe murder program. We had an author in from Eastern Iowa. It was a free program. It was, it worked out really nice. He was just traveling through. We had over, I think we had like 36 or 37 people attend. That's really great for an adult program for us. And then we also had, I don't have it on here, but we had a Ukraine 101 program in September. Again, over 34 people attended that one. And then Gab herself survived World War II over in Poland. And she's lives at the store blank and has taught there and other places. So, that was, it was amazing to see how many people came in and really cared, wanting to know more about Ukraine. We also had Becky Anderson, she's a local author from Iowa, and then just a fun terracotta pumpkin pot candy dish. But again, those who can't afford to go to a paid painting class, we provide those at the library. With what skills that God gives us, so everybody can be their, use their own creativity. They may all turn out different, which is fun. So, we'll wrap it up by looking at some of our current projects here. Last time I was here, talked about an open position, and I'm going to talk about an open position this time. Our high school gal who, she's graduating early, so December 19th is her last day, so we're looking to fill that. Kind of put some plugs in up at the high school with some of our teachers and put up the job up there. We sent it to the newspaper, we're advertising it on Facebook, so hoping to get, it's eight hours a week, a little over, like 4:00 to 6:00, 4:00 to 6:30. We got a grant from Monogram Loves Kids Foundation. It was over $6,000. We're super excited. If you switch to the next page, Gene, this shows you some pictures of that. And so, it's just a, it's a, kind of like a huge tablet almost. And we're going to put it in our teen area. You can pick all different kinds of age levels, but we're going to pick teens because that's where we really try to target. We've got this really great base of kids that are, you know, like been growing with us for the last six or seven years. And, and they're starting to become tweens and teens, and, and we want to keep them. And they have to have a reason to come to the library. And we could get an Xbox, or we could get a Playstation, but everybody has those at the home anymore. So, this is something that they do not have at home. So, we're excited to add that, we're happy about that grant money.
Is that the picture mostly in the bottom left here, Amanda?
Yeah, yeah, that's for like, like older kids. But yeah, it's all, it's all, it's all the same kind of table. It just depends on what kind of games that we pick to put on it. And the, the best thing about it is it's virtually maintenance-free. That's what we've been talking to other libraries about. It'll take us a while to get it in because it is made over, I think, France. So, it's, it's a process to get it in and order it into our specifics. A couple other things. We got a grant from the Shelby County Community Foundation, so we are going to purchase three patron computers, and they will replace, three of them that were purchased in 2016. We do budget replacements, but we always have like some technology that comes up, and so we don't get all of our computers replaced. So, our three-year replacement plan kind of goes out the window sometimes. And so, it's nice that we have the foundation like that to, just helps support when we need those, those things. And then we continue to work on our exterior updates outside. So, we got a committee coming, meeting coming up, so... Other things, any questions?
Keep rolling, keep doing what you're doing. Oh, excellent, especially the technology stuff. It's tough to stay on top of because, you know, by today, it's pretty much obsolete tomorrow, it seems like in an ever-changing world, so...
We were hoping for four patron computers because that's what we have left. And so, we didn't get the full grant, but that's okay. So, we're gonna, we're just going to take all four of them off, replace three, and then hopefully, as, you know, the funds this year allow, we can put a fourth one back in. But yeah, it's, it's tough to stand on top of all of that.
Hey, the gentleman in my office today, and he's listed his three goals, he wanted to keep driving. He passed his DOT test, and he wanted to go to get groceries, wanted to go to church, he wanted to go to the library. He's in his 80s, so he likes to read. And so, it's not just the little people you see up there. There's lots of folks in our community that really appreciate what you guys are doing, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's, it's great because, you know, we do offer the homebound program, and we know there's some people who have trouble getting into the library. And we ask them, you know, would you like us to do homebound? No, I want to come in here and I want to pick out my books. And it might take them 10 minutes to get in the door, but, you know, we love seeing their faces, and, and they truly value what we do. And I just wanted to just give it one plug for the library. We're really grateful for the new, for the additional health wellness benefit that the council approved. So, they're just super excited to have, to be able to do that, a little bit more affordable option. So, just wanted to extend their appreciation for that, so... Any other questions? All right, well, we've seen the most.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything you asked.
You brought along a very patient young man back there.
Yeah.
He did a good job hanging in there.
He's TikToking back there. I'm a library scout. Everything about yourself.
She's got TikTok and Gene. All right, we'll move on to Resolution 2513. This is a resolution to partner with community stakeholders to develop a county-based ambulance service. We've got this, do we need to read it? Do I need to read it or just talk about it?
I think it might be helpful, Mayor, if you'd like to read it. Does it, takes the picture and tells the story?
I know a lot of work went into this to get it on print, on paper, so, and we may talk about it after.
I think it might be helpful, and then I can just summarize a few things after you, after you read it.
Okay, the resolution, I'm not going to say that, we haven't passed it yet. So, ambulance service is an essential service, and citizens of Harlan and Shelby County have a reasonable expectation that ambulance services be available in times of need. The ambulance commission of Shelby County, through a 28E agreement between the City of Harlan and Mertumora Hospital, is contracted with Medevac Corp. to provide this ambulance service. The owners of Medevac Corp. have informed the commission that they intend to retire in the next two to four years and cease operations as an ambulance provider. There's a severe shortage of both paid and volunteer EMTs and paramedics nationally, causing the cost of operating an ambulance service to increase significantly. The City of Harlan, that be resolved, we should engage, actively engage with community stakeholders, including Mertumora Hospital, Shelby County Board of Supervisors, Emergency Management Association, Fire Department, law enforcement, and county EMS volunteers to develop a county-based ambulance service and funding mechanism to assure the long-term sustainability of this critical and essential service. The mission statement and goals of the stakeholder group will be the following. Provide for a high-quality EMS system which assures that a comprehensive approach to best serve the citizens of Shelby County. Goals are develop and establish a plan for a county-wide EMS system in Shelby County that works in cooperation with counties, cities, hospital, and all volunteers. This plan would be based in the continuum on emergent patient care, including 911 calls, transports to county hospital, and transports to higher level of care facilities. Provide care at the highest level in the most cost-effective way to the taxpayers. Plan for a sustainable, unified, and fiscally responsible ways to support the volunteer agencies while providing 24/7 advanced life support. I think it's, the rest of it's just the verbiage, but I, I know, I haven't personally attended, attended the meetings that now Gene has. Alex is here, he's a big part of this. There's lots of pieces in this, this is a big puzzle. And in my mind, it always comes down to, we all expect to dial 911. I know the answer. It's just how long is it going to take for someone to get there, and that's changed. And if you can't pick up a newspaper or look at something online and see EMS is the forefront of Iowa, Shelby County, you know, the United States, it's a critical time right now, so it's not just us, but I think this is, this group, you know, I'm a very small piece of that group. I just sit in the, in the choir and watch, but they have worked very, very hard. And it's, it's just in the beginnings of what we're, what they're trying to figure out, how do we go forward? And this is a, this is a piece that is helpful. On council, I think you probably have read this, and I think you've probably been a part of some of these things, but it is a, we're talking about essential service, and that's, that's the key piece that we all think it is. But there's, you know, it hasn't been visited at that, at a state level. And law enforcement and fire departments are, and we understand they are, they should be. I personally, I'm not speaking as a mayor, I'm just as Jay, is this, this should be an essential service. Because I know I expect, if I have to dial out a number, somebody's going to show up, and our first responders, I mean, law enforcement, those guys are the ones that show up, and then they need to wait for someone to get there, and that's what's really critical. And then the volunteers, you know, that's a critical piece of this too. It's, they're aging out, and, you know, it's, there's not as many of them out there. And that's, that's, that's hard too, because they're the ones that get there before, not just in our, our own city. They get there before anybody else does, and so, that's my soapbox for 30 seconds, so... Gene, do you want to add any more to this?
Did an excellent job of summarizing what's, what's been going on. The hospital board reviewed this at their last meeting. The Board of Supervisors will be reviewing this. And again, as a resolution, it is a statement of support and approval for where we're going. Again, we've been allocating resources and planning towards this effort already through a number of stakeholders. And the city is obviously one of those stakeholders, as we're currently in the 28E agreement. It is a team approach, and the future will be a team approach as well. Not only career and paid professionals, but also the volunteers, which are a key piece to the future as well. This is leading up to, the stakeholders have set up committees at this time. So, we have a finance group, an operations group, and a public relations group. Expect that over the next few months, we'll see the PR to begin to ramp up and leading towards next fall, towards a referendum for Shelby County to look as EMS as an essential service. So, it can be looked at and provide a consistent funding stream such as fire and police. So, a lot more to come on this, and this is essentially a, a statement of approval and support for what we're doing. In this bridge timeframe between now and the time that our current private service phases out, our costs are going up, our cost to participate in the ambulance commission, and I've referenced this before. So, we can expect, as we go into budget this next year, that we'll be adding another 50% to 60% towards our current to, to get through this bridge plan to get to a county-based solution. Which I've already referenced before, but we'll be reviewing that in more detail at our budget hearings. Anything you would add to that, Alex? Appreciate you being here, because your office has been a key anchor to this.
Well, I don't think so. I guess there was something about, well...
And again, these resolutions, this resolution here would demonstrate that support as well as teamwork with the county and the hospital. That's all.
You may have any questions? Somebody want to make a motion for Resolution 2513?
Second.
One second.
Motion by Shaven, we're going to give one to Beal Lindberg out there.
Zoom land.
Yeah, wherever he's hiding.
Who's second?
Beal Lindberg.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beal Lindberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
Review the closure of Fourth Street Bridge through April 15th of 2023. Is that the little bridge?
The structure down on Fourth Street. This will be the third year that we're recommending this. And it is to keep any of our city vehicles loaded down with heavier equipment and trucks off that structure during the winter months. We've had no concerns or complaints the past few years. We think this is a very proper and prudent approach. We have reached out, or we are making contact to look at feasibility engineering for a replacement structure. And we have allocated ARPA money towards stormwater projects of this nature. Our objective would be that by next year at this time, we would have a new structure of some sort there. We believe it's going to be, need to be a bridge versus that that would be a part of having a professional look at what a replacement structure should be. This is just the formal authorization that will, from you to do similar to what we have the last two years. And happy to answer any questions.
Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Kroger.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Beal Lindberg.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
City Administrator's report.
A few highlights and things we're working on and things coming up. Jane and I had the opportunity to be at the Turkerson Center today. There were 60-plus other clerks, administrators, finance for the annual budget workshop. We were the kickoff site for the state, so we had a number of state folks out. So we had a number of state folks out, had high regard and appreciation for a beautiful center, high regard for Kelly and Kelly Miller, the director there, did a great job. And got current updates that we'll take into our budget planning season with some of the tweaks and numbers, as well as some legislative changes, which we'll all hear a lot more about when we get into our budget planning and budget workshops. A few other updates, there's been advertising going on. The Bags League, Indoor Bags League is starting at the Vets Auditorium this Thursday. It's a six-week league. I know they've already had a number of signups. You can stop in City Hall, go down to Vets, or show up the night of. The first night will be this Thursday, and it'll be a six-week league. Couple of projects and things going on with our public works teams. The Parks Group has been putting in the warning track, softball field, as well as putting an agri line, which we approved with the school, both those warning tracks. Also working on the new pump and wellhouse for the irrigation system down at JJ. So the water lines are in, the powers run, and we're seeking a solution for water storage. And have a few additional leads on that, and thanks for some of your input towards that. Awareness at the burn ban with this continued dry weather. Again, check out the marquee signs, Facebook, EMA, if there's any questions, contact your local fire chief or contact EMA. Yet still be, continue to be, continue to be in a critical time. We've had questions on that, maybe you have as well, but just confirming we are still in a burn ban. The taxi lane project at the airport had the final concrete pour. I believe they're doing some other finish work, but on target to have that wrapped up by mid-November. That's great progress. The last couple of items, at the next meeting, I anticipate, at your next council meeting, that you will have in front of you the final master plan and cost opinion for the Pioneer Park Playground and other infrastructure in front of you. We're putting that in front of the Parks Commission next week and fully expect their recommendation of approval to the council. Hats off and appreciation to the steering committee, which has been a group of volunteers working on this for the past eight or nine months. And then with final adoption of that, we'll transition fully into fundraising and grant writing. So some excitement, some excitement brewing there. And the last two items I have, we do continue to, or we have received, and I expect we'll continue to receive some questions on ash trees. Appreciate the newspapers put out some information, an article. Again, don't have to look very far, although most of the leaves and things are dormant now, but you could really tell this summer, the number of ash trees. We thought it would be helpful, so we put this out on our Facebook and it's been shared a number of times. And we just did this the past few days, that again, we're clearly aware, there are 330-plus ash trees in the city's right-of-way. And to date, over 70 of those have been removed. We'll be taking, it could take up to five years, we fully expect it will, to remove all of those in the public areas. And one of the common questions we have that we're having individuals call in or contacting us are, "Do you know about my tree?" And we, through our GIS and mapping, we are aware of every address and location of those trees. If you need to contact us, we'll certainly respond to those calls, but rest assured we are aware of where all 337 of those are. And if you're getting questions, again, please direct those to city staff, or if you've got questions, we'll do our best to help you out. Expect we'll have more of those questions over the coming years, but just want to keep that in front of folks. And then lastly, so the exchange stream bank stabilization project is well underway. Would estimate it's more than half done. Just want to share a few photos, and you can see the amount of clearing that's already happened on the north, actually both sides. And with having the right big toys and big equipment, how quickly things go. And this area right here, my cursor is, that's the primary area, we want to straighten that channel. And this is just a more distant view, but again, that's the sections A, B, and C. We've had our engineer on-site a few times with some observation, and our street staff have been monitoring it as well. But it's been going well. The property owners have been very cooperative and haven't had any issues. Expect that will be wrapped up in probably very short order. I know they've already brought in two loads of riprap replacement. And with that, those are my updates and happy to answer any questions. Or Jane, anything that I've missed that may be going on?
Must've been very thorough, Gene. Nobody has anything they.
No questions. Or just ready for me to stop talking.
All right, well, thank you. Under my report, there is a, I hesitate to even say anything, but I would just say, happy birthday, and I know it's a hard birthday for Gina.
Thank you.
She's missing a big piece of her birthday celebration today. Her father passed away. And just let you know, the city family is, dads are special. And I don't know if he ever gave you a hug, whatever he did for your birthday, but I'm sure it's, I'm sure you're missing that today. So, but we're thinking about you.
Thanks.
Your husband said 29, so that's what we're celebrating.
Yep.
Moving on to Todd Belene in the Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industry.
Just a couple of quick items, and again, just another example of the great work the library is doing. So as part of the Harvest Fest, Emily comes down and she does Storytime for us, and they're in full costume, and she reads scary stories for a kid that sits down there on a page, a bale and wants to hear a story. And that place was busy for hours. I'm surprised that she still has a voice today, considering how much she read. So just, again, just another example of the great work they do. That event went really well, talking to a couple of the retailers downtown, they were telling me they went through 1,000 pieces of candy during the candy walk. And I know we went through 150 pumpkins and 600 hot dogs. So yeah, it was, it was very well-attended and, you know, already looking at this year's event to figure out how we can even, you know, maximize things for next year's event. And there were just events all throughout the county that all, weather helped to rinse it, but we had great attendance at everything throughout the county. So just thanks to all the volunteers, all the sponsors, because they're really the ones that make all that stuff happen. And that kind of kicks off event season for us, because this weekend we got forgotten artists downtown, some wonderful art displays will be down there. It's also the Holiday Open House for the downtown district, so go on down and get some deals from the retailers. And we'll just keep moving forward. We'll have recipe walks, we'll have the lighting of the Christmas tree, we'll have Santa in the cabins, we'll have Santa is coming to town. And by December 26th, you're not gonna see me for a week, but after we get done with all this. But anyhow, things are going great. Couple of other items. One, I went to the Western Iowa Tourism meeting last week. As you may or may not know, tourism's changing in the state. We're not gonna have regional tourism anymore. They kind of just split the state in half and assigned one person to the west and one person to the east. So we're kind of on our own here. So we are expanding that Western Iowa Tourism guide that the Harlan Tribune does, thanks to them, great idea. We're going to run it all the way up to the border and cover all of Western Iowa with that package now. And then it'll get distributed all the way down the I-80 corridor to Eastern Iowa. So hopefully that'll draw more visitors into Shelby County and into Harlan and into our state parks and all of the other things. And then as an addition to that, I found out that maybe the rules have changed a little bit, and I might actually be able to put our website, exploreshelbycounty.com, on our signs that welcome people to our county. So if that gets done, that'll help a lot too, because everybody's going to their phone to figure out what they can find when they're visiting different places, and that'll tell them where to go. And then also, we are in need of baked goods donations. So during the Veterans Breakfast on November 13th, we're gonna be hosting a bake sale. It's gonna be a free will bake sale. And all the proceeds are going to buy pool passes for underprivileged kids next pool season. So we started that at the Harvest Fest, we were able to raise a little over $350 there. We're gonna continue to do it at Veterans Breakfast on the 13th. So if folks want to make a donation for us, just try to bring it by our office by November 11th, and we'll get it ready to go.
Call me before you do that.
Sure.
First buyer right there.
That's it for us now. If you have any questions.
Are the, I know we discussed probably about a month ago, some of the downtown city lights, are those?
We're still working on the fact that you just got an email today from our Bonzel rep that helps us with them.
Okay.
Just as with everything else right now, the biggest problem we're having is getting the parts that we need to be able to repair. Our goal is to have it done by the middle of the month, because of all of the events we have downtown through the end of the year.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks.
Joe Rouschemberg, HMU.
Hello, everyone. Just wanted to, I guess, update some of the items from our board meeting last Thursday. We board passed the revised general policy number 18, which covers the one-year back billing or crediting through accounts. We updated that just to include electric, gas, water, and then add sewer info back in for that one-year period of back billing or crediting account for any billing errors. Board also passed our new water rate increase that we've been talking about coming up. Again, that's just to cover our costs of our water, water source project and build up our, build back reserves for future maintenance of the water system. As an example, as far as increases that the resident could be looking at, some of that would, I mean, we looked at a typical, if somebody would use 4,000 gallons a month, we calculated that their bill would increase approximately $12.50 per month for somebody that uses 4,000 gallons a month. Those rates then will be effective with December 1st billings. Board also approved the contract with Clayton Energy, I had mentioned that before, as far as a consultant to do our gas purchasing of the natural gas. That contract will start December 1st with Clayton Energy. Also, the HMU union recertified, so we'll be starting negotiations here shortly also. And then HMU is scheduling a customer celebration, instead of having it typically in the summer. And this kind of came about with the kind of carryover pandemic, yet didn't have anything this spring. And I suppose part of it's, you know, with me coming onboard too, James is the CEO. We decided we still wanted to try to have something yet this year, so we're planning on December 13th. And it's gonna actually be a noon meal, 11 to 2. And we're gonna, at this point, our theme is soup and Santa, since we're close to Christmas, so we're gonna have a Santa there kind of during the meal. And then we'll also have Santa there from 3 to 5, kind of for any school-age kids that might want to show up at the Vets there to, you know, take a picture of Santa.
At the Vets, Joe?
Yep, at the Vets. December 13th. We added two new employees, and I think I talked about Frank Durby came onboard first part of October, and I mentioned that, new lineman. But we also did add Corey Towne, who's gonna be a water systems operation technician also. Got a couple more items. McClure Engineering, we talked about this grant application. They did actually submit the grant application for funding for our water source project. They submitted that last week, I think that was due on the 28th, so we'll see how it'll be fair with that. McClure thought we had a pretty good chance of getting something for some grant money towards that water project. And, and I think I've mentioned this before, but I just wanted to highlight that September and into the first part of October, I believe it was, we completed some maintenance on our existing wells, acidized and also, acidized just to try to get more volume out of those existing wells, worth on seven wells. And we did actually gain 250 to 300 gallon a minute by kind of trying to do some rehab. Thought process is we've tried to do, I think there's a little money left in the water budget. So come spring, we're looking at probably doing another three, four wells, you know, try to do that same process on those to see if we can gain some flow out of those. So I mean, we had some wells that were doing 20 gallon a minute, maybe or less, and a couple of those, I mean, we got it about 110, 120 gallon a minute after the treatment. So that's part of the process. Hopefully that'll keep us out of any type of water conservation next spring. Which then hopefully fall us into this new project once we get those four new wells online, you know, next summer, fall. So things are looking up for the water department at least. All right? Any questions?
Thanks, Joe.
We're gonna do the knee dance over the winter, right?
Yes, we, yeah, yeah, we definitely, I mean, those wells are still slightly becoming in the, we need some moisture.
We want a lot of snow, which we don't want. That's the forbidden.
You said a lot of snow, Kyle.
Well, that's moisture.
Takes a lot of snow to make one inch of water.
10 to 1 ratio of the way.
10 to 1, that's what it takes?
Yeah.
Give us water.
Yeah.
Any comments from the public? Any comments from this side of the room? No? RJ?
Remember to vote next week.
Final thumbs up? Oh yeah, make sure everybody gets out to vote. Okay, meeting adjourned.